Here, and so at this moment, would you please stand for prayer and pledge? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day that you've given us for the health and the strength and your blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We just pray this evening that we would have the wisdom, Lord, to make the right decisions, to do the things that would be pleasing first to you, but for the very best for our community, for our parents, for our children. We just pray that you'll continue to bless this district and help us, Lord, to continue to grow and to improve and, Lord, to be the very best that we can be. And we ask this in your name, dear Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next on the list is the adoption of our agenda. And just take note that we had an addition to add 7.02, the approval of a plan from ESC and Student Services requesting the 22 or 23, 24 mental health application, mental health assistant allocation plan. It's there, it's on the consent, but it's on the updated agenda. So, motion by Ms. Carlton, second by Ms. Agner. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. This brings us down to the items of interest or concerns by the public. If there's anyone here who'd like to address the board, then now would be the time to do such. Do we have anyone? If not, we will move on. The consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda. This brings us down to 12.26, the approval of salary schedules. Item number one is the administrative salary schedule for 23, 24.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Do we have a second? All right, Ms. Agner seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Item number two is the principal and assistant principal salary schedule for 23, 24.
Motion.
Who made that most? Ms. Donnell made the motion. Okay, do we have a second? Ms. Carlton seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. Item number three is instructional salary placement schedule for 23, 24. Ms. Agner makes the motion.
Second.
All right, Ms. Carlton seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Item number four is non-instructional salary schedule for the 23, 24 school year. All right, Ms. Agner makes that motion. Ms. Carlton seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried.
I have a couple of questions. So the instructional and non-instructional have not changed from the prior year? This is just a simple, this pending negotiations, obviously, once we settle those negotiations, those new schedules will come back to the board, but we're required by laws for the board to have given us permission to pay the awards down with my book.
Okay.
Of course, once we settle those negotiations, they'll come back.
So is there a reason why one is saying 23, 24 and the other one is saying 22, 23?
Pull the actual document and look at it. It's still like.
But basically, we're just doing what we need to do at this moment. Okay.
And that's how these people will be paid until settled negotiations and of course, for that to July 1st.
All righty. This brings us down to item 16.02, a public hearing, the adoption of the millage. And so, would you like to?
We got your email.
This also now is a public hearing. Okay.
So at the last meeting, I did not have the RLE at that time, so I've since updated that. So the required local effort with the prior period funding adjustment that the board is going to adopt is 3.209, and that is down from the prior year RLE, which was, I believe, 3.289, so it's down .08 of a mil. So the total millage, and no other millage is changing, 1.5 for capital outlay, .748 for discretionary operating, and then the voted millage of .25. So a total millage of 5.707. Only change we have from the millage from the prior discussion. So if there aren't any other questions.
I would, if it's not, then I would make a motion that we approve the millage rate.
All right, motion been made that we do that. Ms. Agner seconds it. Ms. Carlton makes the motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone to address the board on this this evening? Aye if not, a motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
You?
No, I was saying aye.
Okay.
I was reading some, man. I'm sorry. I'm a little late, I was reading some.
Okay.
Late reaction.
Okay, good. All right, 16.03, the public hearing, also adoption of the tentative budget for this school year.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Agner makes that motion.
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Carlton seconds it. Would you have anything you'd like to say on that?
The revenue expenditure budget has not changed, only a slight change from state source to federal source, and the overall change was to revenue for general fund was 29,000, and I think some change from, you know, the previously stated budget. So no other changes noted.
All right. And this is a public hearing. Do you have anybody from the public that would like to address the board on our budget coming up? If not, a motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried.
Question. Ashley, would you just, you said this last week, but if you don't mind, would you say it again? This is, we have to post this as an increase.
Correct. There was a tax increase advertised, and the reason for that, so despite a lower millage rate that the board adopted, tax values, so property values are up by 16% from the prior year, thus making a tax increase. So therefore, we have to advertise a tax increase. So even though the board has adopted a lower millage rate, we still have to advertise that because it is generating their tax revenue.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on that? Well, thank you.
Thank you, Ash.
All right, we're down to items of interest by superintendent and board. Ms. Superintendent, do you have anything?
Just two quick things. Admin team, she's administrative team and I, district team attended the annual PACE conference last week in Tallahassee, just had some, just lots of learning whenever a lot of the new laws are taking effect, and just had some basic time together to discuss some things that are going to be, that we're going to have to take care of for the next year. Went from there Thursday afternoon down to Orlando for our Teacher of the Year Gala with Ms. Lori Blue. My first time down there, it was fantastic. She did a great job representing Taylor County, and I was just very proud to be a part of that. That's all.
Okay. Ms. Ball, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, thank you, and I do not need an executive session.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Donnell.
Yes, I just got a quick question, Superintendent. I've got a couple of phone calls and emails in regards to the supplemental positions at the middle school and the high school being re-advertised. Can you give me some clarity on that? I told them I was just thinking that you guys hadn't filled all the positions, and that's why it was re-advertising them all. Can you, do you know anything about that?
No, I asked for all those, if they weren't, if it was not. Let me say this so everybody can hear me, and I can be heard if somebody wants to watch this on TV. What I asked us to do, you know, we had a supplemental committee this year that was formed, and one of the things that we talked about is making some changes to that. I asked that those positions remain open until teachers return.
Okay.
Because, so that teachers can have the opportunity to apply for those positions per contract, per teacher union contract.
Okay.
That was why I asked those to be left open. So the only ones that we've already filled were the ones that start right away, which was football and the summer weightlifting, which of course, they've already fulfilled their contractual obligations.
Okay.
Student casual, yeah, you know, but the other things, like, I don't know, baseball that don't start yet, those could be filled at a later time when teachers are back for one full week and have the opportunity to apply, should they wish to.
Okay, I just want clarity, because I've got a couple of phone calls, and I told them I know pure contract, it does instruction, none instruction, then outside, but I just wanted you to speak to it because.
I appreciate that. I'm just trying to help our teachers, because those are who we're trying to help, our own employees. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanted you to, some clarity, I just wanted you to explain what was the reason for that.
I appreciate that opportunity. I just have the question of why was it posted when it was?
It's always posted at that time. I don't mean to answer that, but it's.
Taken down, then it was put back up.
Because, because I asked it to be, because it wasn't supposed to be closed, and so it was human error, that's why. And that's how it'll be from now on, as long as I sit in this chair. We will advertise those positions when teachers come back, so that they have the opportunity. Teachers are tired during the summer, and they don't have, they don't read their emails, they don't know what opportunities are out there, and if our goal is to help our teachers, then we'll advertise it as such moving forward.
So we're going to wait until teachers return to advertise those?
For one week, yes, ma'am. I'm only going to do it for one week, just to give them time, and Kiki will send out a reminder email when the teachers return to say, hey, just a reminder, all supplemental positions have been advertised. If you're interested in coaching any sports or being the sponsor of any national or whatever, you know, it's open right now.
Did we fill any at all during that time?
We filled.
Which ones? How many did we fill during that time?
So football for sure, because this football started.
We haven't voted and appointed, right? We've just, okay.
They're going to come before the next one.
Okay.
Volleyball, we cannot put anyone until, there's a couple of people that have applied, but they don't have that athletic coaching. Waiting on those to come in. So they cannot be appointed until that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but some of those other people who applied that thing to close, they had not, they didn't have it, it's not, they had only applied, they did not have the qualifications.
They qualify for coaching.
Now, when we advertise, did we make sure that everybody that applied knew that they was going to have to have that certificate in order to be appointed?
I've been telling the principals for months, and I probably started back in January, February, sending this information out to the principals and athletic directors, saying, so the only people that have to have an athletic coaching certificate are people that do not work for the district. If I'm a certified teacher, I'm covered, but if I am a non-instructional and I'm coaching a sport, or I am not employed by the school district, then DOE requires them to have this athletic coaching certificate.
Okay.
A lot have applied, people that do not work for the district have applied, but we're waiting on those statements of eligibility that say you are eligible.
Okay. And again, this is not a new requirement, this is something that's been in policy, it just hasn't been enforced.
And you know how you asked about the teachers with the, you know how we've talked before about teachers, like, we won't let a teacher be hired to come before the board if they don't have that, the.
Certification.
It's the same thing, it's no different. We're just trying to follow policy and do what's best for our employees. That's all it is.
Do we have a limit on the number of supplements that someone can have?
Say that again.
Do we have a limit on the number of supplements that a teacher can have? So they could have 10 if they wanted to.
We don't have any teacher that has 10, but I suppose they could.
That would be if the principal, I would, can they fulfill all the duties?
We've never had one that have ever had over probably three, I don't think.
Do we have anybody that supplements at one school and supplements at another?
Do they supplement at most schools?
I said, do we have people that do that?
Um, I, after a year ago, I've had coaches that don't work.
That they're not overlapping seasons.
Something at the high school, but at this point, I remember being in the Paul Viner era, when you liked those coaches.
I don't know if anybody's.
I know that my son did basketball at the high school for a couple weeks, goes to instructional first, and wants those coaches on his school students.
But for example, this year, your son's not doing anything at the high school. Okay.
But like, I know in the past, we had with alternative school, I think Mr. Harvey. Yeah.
Now, I do know there's been a question before in regards to the number of supplemental, so I know that's not a new concern, but I'm just asking that, again, when you guys see this type of stuff, please, as soon as you can alert us, so we can, because when we go to give phone calls, I'm just going by what I know to be policy, and I don't want to say something, and that's not the case. I do think I do a good job of asking the question, but again, when it came to me, I told him, I said, I know that's always advertised until filled, and we don't advertise those individual, we advertise it as a whole. So that was the reason I was thinking it got re-advertised, because maybe a position hadn't been filled, but I didn't realize you wanted it re-advertised, so teachers can make sure they've had the opportunity to look.
And there's lots that haven't been.
Okay. Yeah, but then, like I say, that did something, came out of that committee about us realizing that now people got to have a certification. So again, I did ask about that, you gave information. I'm just wanting to make sure the public is aware of this, because we do know, we do have people in the community that have been in positions that's not in district, and if they're thinking someone, administrator has cleared them, but then now it's going back on the board, they're kind of thinking, well, you know, I was told I had this, but technically, I think the board has asked too, that appointments don't occur till we vote. So again, we will make sure we're following policy. So I'm just asking that we make sure that if we're going to follow policy, we follow policy with everything.
I agree.
That's my only concern. I'm good, Danny.
And I agree.
All right. Ms. Agner, you have anything else?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carlton.
The only thing I was going to ask is, how many unfilled instructional positions? We had 20 last week.
Too many more. I mean, not many of them filled. I might say 16.
Not anymore being appointed on this one.
I know that some of the principals have reached out to us and told us they have some that are, that they've interviewed, that they want to, but they're, it's not ready to come to you all yet, but they will be filled, but it's just a few, it's not.
That's 15 that's been filled, or 15 still in need?
There's 18 classroom positions posted. I'm not saying that there's not people in those folders and they're going through the process, but there are.
18 posted.
Now, are they just going to be advertised to fill too?
They all are.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, if they're filled with somebody that's not certified, remember, it'll remain, every nine weeks, we re-advertise.
Now, we're not appointing anyone that's non-degreed into a teacher's position, right? They're going to a sub-position, but that position, what you just stated, is advertised until they get certified or they get filled.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
When they pull them in, every nine weeks, we re-advertise those.
Okay.
All righty, anything else? Okay. Well, bringing us down to the end of our meeting here, but we're still going to be continually running, because we're going to move right into a workshop here. But let me say, let me say this, I just got some clarification, or need some clarification on the 15th, that is when we're going to have our three-hour policy workshop. Okay, that's from 1 to 4.
Yes, sir.
We, it is, it is board meeting day, right? Can I suggest that we just pick up at 4 o'clock with our board meeting, instead of waiting to 5:00 and move right on into it?
So you want, you're proposing to move the board meeting to 4?
Just that one meeting.
Say that again.
He's just asking for that one meeting.
Okay. If you all can make it, I have, I'll do, whatever. Yeah, the, up to the board, I'm good.
And because we've already dedicated ourselves.
Did Jamie say she could be here today?
Yeah, she did, she did at that meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Can we just roll right in from that into our board meeting at 4:00, but we'll need to make notice and everything.
Do we need to take action to change that?
You do.
Okay. I would make a motion that we change the board meeting date on the 15th to 4:00.
4:00.
For that meeting only.
That meeting only, yeah.
Okay, you've got a second on that, Ms., and all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Can I say something about that, too, just while you were talking about that, those big packets that you have in front of you, I made a copy of it, that is what, in that workshop, what they'll be kind of going through, so they told me I could go ahead and give it to you, so like, look through it, make notes, comments, questions, whatever, but they said I could go ahead and give it to you, so that's what that, that's what that is.
Okay. All right, I've got home, got homework to do.
I'm glad we got it early.
Okay. All right, well, other than that, just, I know everything's hustling and bustling, everybody trying to get ready to get, get things kicked off, and is continuing to strive and, towards what we're headed our way, and everybody continues to work together, and it'll all come together. But other than that, then, at this moment, as I said, we are not adjourning, we're just moving into our workshop, and workshop of discipline matrix for updates for 23, 24. Ms. Be sure as you want to kick it off.
Can you hear me now? If you'll recall, we talked about having workshops to, to look at our discipline policies and manual, and the first part of that was just to kind of look at where we were, and then you could decide as a board if y'all wanted to workshop regularly. So this was the first kickoff, and just to kind of show you where we're headed. So we're looking at our data for this past year. You gave it to me, I'm sorry.
Oh, and the clicker, sorry.
This is a brief overview. Sorry about that. Guess I could have sat at my desk. Okay, basically, we had, from August the 1st, 2022, to through the summer, we had about 32 referrals a day. This is just kind of a graph that shows you, I know it's a little bit hard to see, but it kind of shows you where your most referrals took place. As you can see on this graph, the most referrals took place in February.
What school was the most?
This is all, this is our district data right here that we're looking at.
You didn't give us a copy of this, did you?
Say that again.
We don't have a copy of this, right?
No, you don't.
Okay, all right.
Did you break it out per school?
I can email it to you. No, because I'm not concerned about per school, I'm just looking at the overall for tonight. Okay? So, so this is just overall. You can see that the high school students received them, if you bottom left, and I can, like I said, I can email this to y'all, and I can have this attached, but bottom left shows you high school had the most referrals, middle school comes in second, elementary is, and remember, elementary is K-5, that's how they group that, so.
And that includes Dean Hatchey?
It's in elementary. Yes, ma'am, it's in elementary. Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right, we go to the next one, and again, this is just, just trying to give you some quick little examples. When you look at the first set of lines, the colors that are, the colored part that's in the top, you'll see in the middle where it says schools, and in fractions, you can see by year, and I should have made y'all color copies of this, because I'm seeing how bad this is now that I'm looking at it up there.
I can't see.
Is it top, right there at the top? Does it have it somewhere? I can print it?
Kiki, would you mind being my Vanna White?
You can see it at the top over here, if you look back here, you can see.
The first box reflects our referrals through the years. Go back to your left a little bit. 1920, see, it starts at 19, the one, one more back over, and box right there, yes. 19, you can see where it says 19, we had about 20, we averaged about 20.8 referrals a day, and you see the trajectory, see where we've gone up since 2022, you see where we're at now. It's, it's continued to grow. Okay, the next colored bars show what our highest categories are, so tardies, defiance, disrespect, aggravated, aggravated actions, and then altercations, okay? It's colored by year.
Do we give tardies at all school, or just the high school? I thought that was still.
I believe it's just the high school.
Okay.
Okay. And then right below those colored, you see the, those colored, it tells you the school, the year in the school. So when you see tardies are our number one, and you look down below, you can see in 1920, the high school where they were for tardies, and you can see in 2021, it dropped a little, 21, 22, it went up, 22, 23, it went up a little bit more. I'm sorry, for referrals. Yep. Y'all see that? I was on the second bar below it, I'm sorry. You can see the defiance, you see the defiance at the top one, top middle, Kiki? Defiance there. You can see where we were in 1920, 2021, we wrote more referrals for defiance, 21, 22, wrote a whole lot of referrals for defiance, 22, 23, it went down a little. So I'm just kind of showing you the trajectory here. One thing that we noticed when we look at this is that almost all of them continue to rise. I mean, you have one aggravated, tell me what you call it, Courtney?
Aggression.
Aggression, went down a little bit in 21, 22, but then you see it rising a little bit again in 22, 23. And again, the one below, it shows you where your main referrals are. So that first graph says high, then middle, then elementary, so you can kind of see the majority of our referrals are written at the higher grades, and if you've been in education long, you, you know that in the younger grades, they do try to give them more opportunities to improve, they do give them more chances to do things other than write a referral, because they're younger and it's age appropriate, and that's really, the older they get, the more the expectation is on the student. Okay, so, kind of looked at our breakdown. You're good. Again, tardies are number one, defiance of authority, number two, disobeying disrespect to others is number three, aggravated acts, and then disruptive behaviors. So when we look at this, we saw that tardies were the number one reason for referral. Last year, we had 941 referrals written for tardies. And those referrals were all written at the high school level, level where we know students are driving.
But wait a minute, are all those student drivers?
Not necessarily, because some of those referrals could have been written because they're late in between classes.
Okay, that's what I was about to say now, because the kids can't help if the parents want to bring them home time now.
Right. But that's a choice that they're making.
I'm saying, are we, when we writing these referrals for tardies, are the parents know we writing referrals for tardies?
Like, so.
Okay, all right.
Now, those referrals.
I know you write referrals, that's why I get my child on time, but I'm just asking.
The second grade offense, which is the one that is defiance of authority, we have 835 referrals for this, and about a quarter of them were written by our bus drivers. Nothing that we're sharing tonight is any kind of knock on anybody, this is just, the data is what it is.
And each true referral is by bus drivers or by the bus coordinator?
Or what?
Are these referrals being written by the bus driver or the bus coordinator?
Bus coordinator, usually. It comes under, right, it comes under her when we look at it, yeah, that's a better way to explain it. It goes in as the coordinator, but really, it was written by the bus.
Okay, I just want to make sure there ain't no second hand. Okay, all right.
The next category is disobeying or disrespecting others, 626 of those were written last year. Two things we've discovered here. First, the majority of those referrals were written by substitute teachers. Secondly, 117 of those referrals involved out-of-school suspensions. 200 of them received in-school suspensions.
Do we do classroom management with our subs?
We're going to talk about that in just a minute.
Okay.
Aggressive acts comes in at number four, with 419 referrals being written for these offenses. Highest incidences in this category are occurring on our buses. And I'm sorry to say in our E S D rooms. But that is what it is. And finally, we see disruptive behavior rounding out the top five. Three hundred referrals were written for this offense. The majority of those took place between the pub and the sub, meaning the middle school alternative classroom and substitute teachers. This resulted in thirty-five students being suspended outside of school and another eighty-three students receiving in-school suspension.
None of them got it spelled, did they? You don't know, this ain't, none of this data including expulsions or?
I didn't see that in there, you know, when I was pulling it, that's, this is what it showed me. When I looked at those particular referrals and I asked what were their punishments through focus, that's what it showed me. Okay? So it is what it is, and it's, it's not pretty, but it's what we're facing, so what are we going to do? So, you know, I-
Add it up, the days that the, that caused absenteeism not to be in instruction, what would that add up to? Do you have any idea?
I have no idea. A lot.
I'm just curious to have that, how much that's caused.
Well, I just told you how many.
It's a snowball effect.
Sure, I would think the same.
Because if they're not there, they're not learning, then they get further behind, then they get frustrated, then they act out again, and it's just a-
Well, I can tell you that at least, I mean, just on those that I mentioned, you know, a hundred and seventeen on those ones were out of school suspensions, so that's at least a hundred and seventeen kids who, who had missed at least one or more day because of that. That's just on that one offense. The other one I said there were, um, thirty-five, and that's just on that one, that one. So, and they could have had multiple suspensions, so, I mean, we're facing it, we know it's ugly and we don't like it and we want to change it, so. So that, that's where we're at, it's not okay. So, we met as a team and we, we would like to propose to the board some updates, this is what we've been working on. So the first thing we need to do is we feel like we need to do a better job of prevention. So when we talk about prevent, prevention strategies, we're suggesting, including beginning each day with a gut check for our students. We're going to ask our teachers to take about ten minutes to just check in with that first group of students that they are assigned. In the past, this is what we've always done, because we were told this was a best practice. They have something on their board, the kids come in, we ask them to come in quietly, they have what we call a bell ringer on the board and we tell them to get busy. Well, when a kid comes into school and they got in a fight with their boyfriend on the way to school, or they didn't have breakfast, or, you know, their, their mama gave them some punishment because they did something when they were walking out the door, that's how they start their day. So when we say come in, get quiet, this is on the board, we're realizing that may not be the best practice we thought. So we're going to ask our teachers to spend the first five, ten, fifteen minutes, you know, we're saying ten, you know, but just do that gut check, to just check in with the kids before we start any kind of academic instruction. We're asking them to think back to the behaviorists like Maslow and that hierarchy of needs. And that hierarchy of needs says, a kid cannot learn if a kid does not feel safe and secure. So we're asking them to take a step back, make sure they're okay, and if they're not, then to do something instead of trying to force them to do something that they're not in the right state of mind to do. You know, if we need to send them to the guidance counselor, if we need to send them to have a discussion with one of the APs or the principal, whatever we can do to get that kid in a better headspace to come back in that classroom and number one, not cause a disruption for others, but number two, to be able to learn for themselves. So gut checks, the first thing we're going to ask our teachers to do back at the beginning of the year. Well, on this Wednesdays is something else that we're working through with our mental health coordinator. So on Wednesdays, we will have circles, restorative circles. They will be rotated throughout, um, the day, which means week one, first period might do it, week two, second period teacher might do it, week three. If that makes sense. So we will have restorative circles where they will have a prompt to talk about, that will have something to do with their mental health, and they will be able to discuss those things. Again, it's just preventative, it's just a way to get the kids talking and to let them know that we're there for more than two plus two in A B C. The next thing we're asking is, um, some clearly defined behaviors that align with focused reporting. As a district, we want to ensure that our definitions are the same from classroom to classroom and school to school. Over the years, we've seen one incident be written up as disrespect and another one as defiance of authority. We want to ensure that we all have a clear understanding so that strategies for correction are appropriately and fairly applied. When we take corrective actions, we also want to make sure that we are still the teachers and that the lessons we provide are ones that coincide with the misbehavior. So when we look at corrective strategies, we want to just make sure that it matches. Um, we do not want to be too lenient nor harsh, we want to make sure that punishments and rewards align with what we're expecting. Examples and non-examples, um, that's really a part of an old school style of teaching. Um, we would think it's important addition, because in the past, we've used things like character education, which is great. We'd say this is our trait of the month, it's respect, um, or perseverance or whatever, and we taught what that is and we went on with it, but, you know, some, are some of our kids a little bit more, what you consider respectful or disrespectful, I may not. That might not be what it looks like in my house. So, again, we're asking to give specific examples and non-examples of what those things practically mean.
Can I ask with that, I don't mean to interrupt, but with something like that right there, I, I know we try, and I know teachers can't be tied up all day with making phone calls. But again, if it is like, I might feel like that's disrespectful, but you don't. I, I, I think something like that wants a parent conversation, because again, if it's causing a disruption in the classroom, we need to make sure that that's not occurring. Like, we need parents and teachers to be on the same page as the expectation for the classroom. So I'm just wondering.
That's why we talk about, you know, including non-examples, which we haven't done in a long time. But I always give the example of when I was in the classroom, uh, a kid got up while I was teaching one time and threw some paper away. Well, that was very disrespectful to me. But in the kid's eye, he was just making sure that, he knew that I didn't want to mess, like, he didn't think of it like that. So no big deal, didn't stop class, didn't make it a big deal, but after class, just grabbed him and said, hey, you know, it's kind of considered disrespectful if there's a speaker, you don't walk in front of them, like, it was no big deal. So, but we've just got to take the time to do that, and it takes time. And, and we recognize that, but we also have come to the realization that something that takes two minutes in the beginning is worth doing because it's going to save you ten minutes at the end. So moving on to your behavior approach is another thing we think we can do better. We like to use the example of an emergency room, a patient goes in, they have a terrible pain in their leg. You know, the doctor doesn't go and cut off their leg right away. I mean, they, they may run blood tests, order scans, review medical history, all determine what the underlying cause is, why the pain's there. Well, we think that we want to do the same thing, we want to know why students not coming to school every other Monday, or, or why they refuse to do their math homework. Because if we can get to the root of the problem, chances are, their legs are going to be removed and antibiotic's going to clear it right up and we can move on, keep learning. So really trying to tear that and making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to, that we're meeting those kids' needs, we're not just delving out punishments. Um, examining and reexamining what's working and, or what's not. Every grading period, we do a good job sometimes of putting these things out there. But we can all admit that we can do a better job of reexamining, reevaluating those practices and making sure that if we're putting these strategies out there and we're seeing they're not working, then we can't keep on doing the same thing over and over again for a whole year. Like, that's not, can't wait till the year's over and go, didn't work, we tried this, but it didn't work. We need to revisit those every single nine weeks. Um, and make corrections if we need to, I mean, if we need to come and change something, if we say something's not working, we're, like, it's us, we're the ones that have the, the authority and the control to be able to change it, why wouldn't we? Why wait till the end? And then finally, sharing strategies and best practices as a district. Uh, my admin team and I plan on getting together regularly and sharing what's working at our schools. Because some, something that they're doing at the elementary school, I may not have ever thought would have worked at the high school, and it may. We just need that time to collaborate and work together to try to do what's best for kids, to keep kids in school, and not just in school, but in their right frame of mind to be able to get their education. Any questions for us? This was just a brief overview, like I said, this, I just wanted you to kind of set the stage to let you know why we're trying to change things, why we feel like this is important.
And you're going to make this change in the matrix for the discipline matrix?
Yes, that's, that is what this is about, the change, this is just the beginning, yes ma'am, I just wanted to set the groundwork, let you know where we're seeing and so that when you come and you see that maybe, and I don't know, this is not the case, but I'm just going to give an example, maybe if you had ten tardies, your punishment was a day of I S S. So you've missed school, so we're going to give you I S S. You know what I mean? So like, we're just, that's just a silly example, but I, but it's really not, like, we want to make sure that we're doing things that are going to help the kids and keep them in class. And so like, with that, I know that my elementary school was working some things in, and they plan on having Saturday school. They have, they, they're going to have some after-school things and they're going to have Saturday, they've got some teachers that already said they would work it, because they want to make sure that if a kid's disrupting or a kid's not coming to school, that they have that ability to have that made up, because they're going to mean business. So it's time for everybody in our community to come together, and if we really want this and we want our kids to do better, then we got to work together. Like, if we give it to, if we build it, we hope they will come.
We used to have after-school suspension. You had to clean the rice rooms, and we had to sweep, we had to pick up garbage, and we had to do all those kind of things.
Middle school still do have after-school suspension.
Everything doesn't have to be punitive, just because you stay after school doesn't mean it might be punitive. You might need to come stay after school because something happened at your house and you need some one-on-one, you know, instruction and something, or maybe we need to get you a mentor. I mean, everything does not have to be looked at as punitive, even Saturday school. Maybe you've missed too much school and we just need to get you in there with a tutor. So everything doesn't have to be punitive.
Is this a presentation, um, administration is planning to do, maybe an orientation or open house?
Haven't really discussed that yet.
Because I, I think, you know, it is something we need to make sure our parents are aware of. Just from the simple fact, like I say, again, um, like with the tardies, like, I know, but I don't think the average parent does know, and I don't think the average kid is going home to say, mom, I got ten tardies. You know, so I, I do think some parents know and some parents don't know. I know most parents, when they pay for a car, they want that car to be there on time. But again, if the parent's not aware that the tardy is happening, I'm just wondering if we're giving out information, I'm not saying we're not, I'm just saying if we're looking at making some changes, the more information I think that we communicate with our parents, it can be a partnership.
I think we could also set some things, and we haven't done this before, but just listening to you gave me this idea. So we used to have Blackboard Connect, this year we're going focused as a similar thing, and we, you know, we're going to do it through focus now, but it's the same thing, it's a call-out. So we might could set, I'll have to get with Ms. Paget, but I think we could set that to where, um, that could call the parent.
I know it calls when they, it is get marked absent, because I stay getting my phone calls and my kids being in class. But I know it go, I know it does work, I know it does work. We, when a kid is marked absent, I do know I, I get a phone call.
And it could do the same thing for referrals.
Oh, you saying doing it for a referral? Oh, okay.
And, and you know, we can say this, but it, it is the truth, you know, at some point, I do feel like a parent has to pick up that app and look at that app. I mean, we can provide it for them, you can, what is the, you can lead the horse to water, but you can't make him drink like that. Like, some of that does have to be on the parent.
Again, I'm not saying they're going to check it, I'm just saying we communicate. Again, if we're looking at doing discipline different, again, I feel like another way we could have is, I'm not saying that'd be our ultimate success, but again, the more we partner with the community, the more we can.
Send those automated calls home.
Saying all that, but it'd be a good idea to have a Saturday training for parents so they can understand how to use focus, so they could understand how to get their information about their child.
I think we do that at orientation, we usually have things to the side where they'll have, I know that, um, y'all can help me out here, but we've always, that night that they come to meet, we always have a room set aside for them to do that.
And can I ask this question, Ron might, because he's the only technology person in here? I know for me, I go to the website to check focus, I know the average parent has focus on their phone. But when I'm looking, like, I had one parent showing me her phone, I couldn't see certain things on the phone that I could see when I know I normally see it on focus. But I know last year, there was a little confusion where people were saying the app wasn't working and they was downloading the app. But I do know parents are doing it, because like, one parent showed me she had all four kids, and she could pull them up, but then there's certain things you could see on here that you can't see on there, and I know that's a mobile issue. But I do know also last year that some people sent the app wasn't working. And so that's why I didn't even bother with downloading, I just checked my stuff online. But do we know that we got all that worked out last year, Ron, with the issues that we seen at the beginning of the year with the app?
There was a couple of issues where the app wouldn't open, other things open in the background. Most of those issues have, have been resolved, but a lot of that comes back to the device itself.
Okay.
If you have an old iOS version on your phone, the app's not going to work correctly. Just with any, any of our software, if we have an old Chrome on our desktops, we can't test the students. So if the phone's not up to date, the app's not going to work properly. So that's with any technology, in order for it to work properly, it has to have the most up-to-date software on it. So if they have a phone that, or they have a phone that doesn't have a software that's compatible with, um, I mean, unfortunately, not everyone can have an iPhone or Samsung Galaxy. Some of these phones, the technology just isn't up to par to be able to oval, open mobile apps.
Okay, but when we-
On the phone, sometimes it's hard to see, there's a little arrow on the side, you tap that arrow and everything shows up.
Okay.
At least that's what happens, I mean, that's how it is on iPhone.
For, but for a case, if the case is covering that little arrow up where you can't see it.
Okay.
That's one of the issues that I ran into, where the parent would hand you the phone, I'd grab the phone and I'd have to take it out of the case in order to be able to access the full, because the case was covered part of the screen.
Could we set up a kiosk somewhere in each school that the, the parents could come?
We have those.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I can speak for the primary and elementary.
Middle school, we would do it, I have a computer set up in the auditorium, we got a computer set up in guidance. Any parent, if they had issues, was more than welcome to come up, I helped them, the guidance counselor would help them. We're all available to help parents. It's just seventy-five percent of the calls I got, I'd say, all right, I'm here, come meet me, no one would show up.
They're available, the computers are available all year round, but then it comes at grade four.
But do we do tell them what Ron just said about make sure your phone has Chrome or make sure your phone is up to date, because like-
That information would probably put out there a little bit better.
Okay, all right. And I'm just saying, can we put it on the district website? Because I know when you go to the district website, it's that focus, but maybe we can put that message there by letting them know, make sure they have the most up-to-date Chrome or, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Crawford has a question.
Absolutely.
My question's a little bit different, though. You mentioned earlier that you probably every nine weeks do a recheck. Okay, so you, so we recheck, we figure out we need to make a change. Will we be able to make those changes like immediately?
I don't think I'm saying like to the discipline matrix, I'm just saying like, if something's not working for a kid, yes ma'am, that we would change that. We wouldn't keep on doing the same thing over and over again for that kid. They might need to be, I mean, when I say elevated, like, right now, I might be just having a check-in with somebody every, you know, one of the teachers might be their check-in, checkout person, the next step might be that kid gets counseling. You know, if it's not working, we can't just keep on doing the same thing.
But we'll be able to be reactive, is, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I think putting all this in a nutshell, what we're hearing, first of all, the statistics is not, like you said, it's not pretty, it's not, it's not what we like to see in, in, in the school. So what, what I'm hearing anyway is that, that, you know, you're, you're trying to be proactive. You're trying to implement or try different strategies that, uh, might give some insight to why we're having all these infractions. There's not a cookie cut. There's not anything cookie cut. But with that said, at least we, you know, are trying to be proactive. And who knows, you may find, I don't think probably everything's going to work, but you find what does work, implement that, and then keep on trying. I mean, we all know that in a perfect world, if kids came, everything was calm, you taught, they learned, they went home, everything was happy at home. But that's just not the world, that's just not the world we live in. But with that said, uh, we do need to make the effort to try to, um, make things better if we can, because we can't continue to climb with these infractions.
We've got to have more parent involvement in their child's, uh, and then I know y'all heard, y'all said this millions of times. But if the parent is not going to be involved and talk with the teachers and work with the teachers, it, when a child sees that they're got a united front, they're going to conform. But when they think they can see some division, they're going to work it just like normal children will do. So if we can get that- So if we can get that message out there to our parents that we're here for them, that we're on their side, that we want to help their child, it's their child, not our child, but we want to help their child. And they, their input is needed, heavily needed. Because there's times when there's things going on that you don't know, and that child may not open to you. But if that parent would get involved, they may open to you and give you some insight into what works and what doesn't work. So I, I think parent involvement is one of the big keys that we lack.
But, but all this, but all this going on, certainly, you know, parent involvement or whatever is greatly needed. But we're looking at the ones who are on the front lines. Classroom teachers, administrators.
And they need those parents.
Because they're involved from time, morning starts to the time the day ends. And so if, this is a collaborative effort, you know, to, to see what is causing, if, if we can pinpoint things in the life of a kid or in overall of the school itself. So you are on the front lines. I mean, you know, we sit behind this desk and we'd love to have everything perfect and calm and, and, and everything. But we do need, as I said, to be proactive. And if that's, if these strategies that you, that you're talking about implementing, all you can do is try and see. And if things, I'm, I'm, I'm certain that some will work, possibly some won't. But it will all come about though with the soldiers out there in the front, that's with the kids in school.
I got two, one question to another concern. With expulsions, I know since I've been a board member, it seemed like every year, expulsions go up. And so I'm just wondering, with this data, did you guys look at like how much of these behaviors resulted in expulsion? Like, I know you looked at tardies, I know you looked at defiance, but like even with defiance, did we look at like how much these things, you know, how much defiance led to expulsion? No, I'm saying, you know, most people, when they get to that level, it's because they've had a number of infractions. But I'm just saying like, I know we had a lot of kids this year that was, and, and this is not just this past year, but I know we had a lot of kids that was expelled. I know we've had a lot of kids that was, you know, it's not home to do work. And I'm just wondering like, when we having these different situations, it's all data and it's, it's all important data. Because again, how do we know what's been affected, what's not been affected if we're not looking at the data? So my concern is, again, you guys are on the front line, but we're also involved in this process and the community does expect that we're all working together. And ultimately, the goal is not to benefit anybody in this room, it's to benefit our community as a whole. The more students we have in school, the more students we get across the stage, the more we see economic, economic development and then people returning in our doors, you know, to one day be in these positions. So I guess my concern is again, I think we do, and I say this all the time, I think we do a good job with providing information. I just, I would like to see us like Bunny say, do more with engaging our parents, but going out to our parents. Like a presentation like this, this is a good presentation we can give out to the community. I'm not saying we got to knock on every door, but we do need the community to be engaged. Because again, again, you heard us up and asking questions. They call you when they want to call you, if it's about a position, if it's about a supplemental. But at the end of the day, I still need you to be concerned with what we're really dealing with. So that's what I'm saying. More stuff warrants an email and it, it warrants more than you being in this room. It also warrants us being out there, making sure we're doing this. Again, because ultimately, I've, I've been in front of the middle school where a parent is trying to force a kid to get out of the car. And this kid is showing they behind and the parent hands are tied. They don't know what to do, but the kid showing out, they don't want to come to school. You got a lot of them don't want to be in school. So they'll get in trouble to get something home. But that parent hand is tied, that parent don't know what to do. And so that parent, I don't think that the parent don't care, they just don't know what to do with their child. It's a lot of them, you know, their hands are tied. But again, if they don't respect home, they're not going to respect anybody. And our schools have for the time. So that's what we need to be trying to figure out, like, what do we do in these situations? Because like you say, you can only write, you know, you can only do so much. But then if you got a kid that purposely don't want to be here, that child does need counsel. We need to make sure the referrals are getting done, but we can't make them sit down nowhere. But I'm just wanting to make sure we're doing what we can to like Bunny say, engage our parents and making sure they have information. And then our parents are supporting us in the efforts that we're doing. We're trying to keep them involved and work with them, so.
I think it's fair to say, what I'll take back from this to my administrators that are not here tonight is when they have their open house, that they include these overviews in that open-
Yeah, I just think, you know, anytime we do anything-
Not just an open house, but like when we have parent nights, that we'll continue to revisit that instead of just going straight to the classrooms. We'll have something at, like as a general session before they go to classrooms. I think that's a great idea.
Habitual.
That's why. They got some people that are late to everything.
Yes, ma'am. Before the kids come back, those parents need to come and show them about the number of what they do. Same thing with the high flyer referral kids, we're going to start off the year on, here's where your kid was last year. Hopefully, they grew up a lot this summer.
Right.
Right, so. The diploma is important to make them do it. Before they start getting- Those are some of the things that we're practicing so that some of those kids-
Hard.
And you can't force maturity. No matter how hard you want to, you cannot force it.
And I know that what we don't want to do, but you know, some people think it's just so easy. I'm like, that is not so easy, like, that somebody had to pay attention at some point before it got that far. But like I said, I know sometimes you got some parents, like I say, their hands are tied, they don't know what to do. And again, these phones, we in infant, you know, it's just a lot of influence and it's-
That's a great idea that happens.
Yeah, it is. That's good to hear. It is.
I'll, I'll look forward to hearing an update later on in the year to see how.
So that was the groundwork. And you all, do you want to have workshops every once a month? Or we want to set workshops or are y'all okay with us going back and doing what we're working on and then presenting it to you? I just want to make sure that I'm doing what you've asked to do.
I like workshops, but again, I s-
Well, just, you know, there again, just, just keep the board updated on, you know, and see how things go. Like I say, until you try, you won't know. And, and you know, if, if some things fail, don't be ashamed that they failed, that you wouldn't have known if you hadn't have tried.
That's right.
And so.
They're the front line.
Yeah. It's a work in progress.
Well, if we can help in any way, we will be glad to. And I think, you know, I, I know some of us have volunteered in different places and I don't know how much good that really does. But if, you know, if there's anything ever that we can do to help or we can recruit people to help, let's not-
Alicia, will we still have that discipline matrix? Next meeting or when? When you going to bring the discipline matrix?
No, if y'all are good, we're going to continue to working on our changes and we'll present them to you as the changes remain.
That's what I'm saying, that we still got to approve a discipline matrix. Are we keeping what we got or are you changing something?
We're still in the midst of making those-
Okay, all right, okay.
But we'll start school without having approved one most likely.
The last one will still be in effect until we get this one done.
With that being said, when the open house comes, parents are going to get an old matrix.
Open house is usually what, how many weeks after? Because we're not talking about make the teacher, we're talking-
So they're going to have a three weeks' lux of maybe not having the new policy.
No, you should have it by the end.
No, by step chamber, because that's usually, is that what y'all just said, you know, I can't?
Yeah, we didn't, well, we didn't review one last year. We, we just did the one the year before, so that's why I'm asking.
We should have it ready by the time we go to open house.
All right, well, appreciate that. And just keep us, keep rolling. All right. This brings us down to adjournment motion. Ms. Carlton makes that motion.
Second.
Agner seconds it. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. This meeting is adjourned.